All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. The call is meeting of the Centraria Board of Aldermen to order. A roll call please, Heather.
Alderman Angel, Alderman Gorman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Magley.
Here.
Alderman Simmons.
Present.
Alderman Wilkins.
Present.
All right, we do have a forum this evening officially this can and will take place. If you'd please join me in the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. With the board's approval, I'd like to shift the agenda around a little bit and bring the as may arise up to the front. I have a proclamation to issue for the girls softball team. Are there any objections?
Maybe we should let them hear a whole week in.
As soon as he has the rise, very last thing on the.
Yeah, that would be good government. I hear no objections, I'll like to do that. Well, girls, I would like to welcome you all to City Hall to our monthly city council meeting. Y'all did a great job down at State representing Centraria well. And proclamation to issue. City of Centraria proclamation for the third consecutive Missouri State softball champions. Sorry, get up there where you can read along with the coach.
There you go.
All right.
Don't be back for everyone else.
Okay. All right, seniors too. We all had to. All right, proclamation for third consecutive Missouri State softball champions. Whereas the Lady Panthers softball team of the Centraria High School won the 2013 Class III Missouri State Highway softball, high school softball championship, achieving their three-peat by defeating Blair Oaks with a final score of nine to two. Whereas by defeating Blair Oaks in the final playoff game, the Centraria Ladies Panthers softball team became the second team in the history of this tournament to become back-to-back-to-back state champions. And whereas the 2013 Centraria High School Lady Panthers softball team has heightened the civic pride and community spirit, garnered favorable attention from regional and statewide news media, and has enhanced the reputation of the Centraria R6 School District. And whereas the players and coaches of the state champion Lady Panther softball team has demonstrated what can be achieved when great students and great coaches work together toward the same goal. Now therefore, I, Tim Greinke, Mayor of Centraria, Missouri, hereby proclaim that all citizens of Centraria and the Centraria R6 School District are encouraged to congratulate the players and coaches for another most rewarding and successful season. Signed and sealed in my office, eighteenth day of November, 2013. And I'd like to ask the seniors if they could introduce themselves and tell us what your plans are. Patrick Beckley.
I'm Cindy Creel. My parents are Brad and Carl Creel, Matt and Amy. I signed Thursday, November 7th, to play at Central Methodist University in Fayette to continue playing softball.
I'm Beth Jennings, and my parents are Sam and Andy, and I signed.
I'm Millie Douglas, my parents are Lody Misty, and I signed to play softball at Southern Illinois University at Burnsville.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you all coming out. Thank you very much. Before I leave, I got one other thing. You all noticed the Centraria City Limit signs? All have the outstanding achievements of the state championship teams. Well, Lynn has talked with the State MoDOT, and they have come up with a plan so that we can list all three state championship years on the sign. Once we have a funding source and can get those, it could be about $180 per sign, so we've got five of them. So, we are taking donations for those. But initially, it will happen. Outstanding girls. Thank you all very much. Thank you. The reason I put Blair Oaks in there twice is because I work with a gentleman who is from Blair Oaks. We were, it was awesome.
I always think, how many cars, that can't be good.
Did you get everybody's name?
Yes.
Did you get everybody's name? Okay.
I have a roster, let's have a court.
All right, we'll go back to consent agenda. Should have the packet in your, information in your package. Anybody notice any changes that needed to be made?
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda as written, although in favor, say aye. All right, council payable over 1250.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
I should point out that you should have in front of you a revised list. Donna couldn't give her numbers to Dad and went back over, and one of the increases for HD Power Solutions was overstated on the first version.
Oh.
And this is about $90 less.
All right.
There were a little bit less.
Yep. Any questions on the council payable over 1250?
I move to approve the council payable over $1,250 and a grand total of $483,604.23.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve council payable over 1250 in the amount of $483,604.23. Although in favor, say aye. 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 All right, at this time, I'll open the floor up for comments from citizens. Any comments? Economic Development Report by the Chamber of Commerce Representatives. They'll have, I guess, their notes. Four minutes in front of you.
I've received a later email saying, you forgot to mention that the theme for the parade is going to be Christmas Carol.
Really?
Yes.
That is on December 7th. Any questions on the minutes for the chamber? Tractor Parade will be on the 20th, I think.
Yes, it's listed.
Pancake Breakfast will be on the 14th.
The Rotary Pancake Breakfast. Okay. All right, any more questions on the chamber or minutes? Public hearing, not scheduled, is that still okay?
It's still okay, sir.
All right, action agenda, finance, nothing?
Still okay, sir.
And permission license, same thing?
Still okay, sir.
Legal, permitting final plat of Southwest Country Estates Plat 3. His ordinance will require two readings. Any discussion?
I should report that I have not yet received the Mylar with the original signatures on it, nor have I received the improvement guarantee with the letter of credit, which Mr. Harris believes will be available on Thursday. So, you pass the ordinance tonight, I would recommend you not sign the plat and I not record it until those documents are in our hands. The attorney has had a chance to sign off.
Okay. Any questions?
I guess the agenda needs to say Country Estates Plat 3, so County Estates is, there's a.
That makes sense.
County made sense at the spell check, too.
Yes, it did. Oliver Wilkins, would you introduce us a quick?
Not sure, bill number please.
Twenty-six, seventy-eight.
I move that bill number 2678 be given its first read by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that bill number 2678 be given its first reading by title only. Although in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
An ordinance approving the final plat of Southwest Country Estates Plat 3 subdivision. A subdivision of a portion of Block M of J.C. Hitt subdivision in Section 16 Township 51 North, Range 11 West in the city of Centraria Boone County, Missouri, and accepting dedication to the city of Centraria, Missouri, of the utility easements and street right-of-way in said plat as the public property of the city of Centraria, Missouri. I move that bill number 2678 be given its second read by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that bill number 2678 be given its second read by title only. Although in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
An ordinance approving the final plat of Southwest Country Estates Plat 3 subdivision. A subdivision of a portion of Block M of J.C. Hitt subdivision in Section 16 Township 51 North, Range 11 West in the city of Centraria Boone County, Missouri, and accepting dedication to the city of Centraria, Missouri, of the utility easements and street right-of-way in said plat as the public property of the city of Centraria, Missouri. I move that bill number 2678 be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that bill number 2678 be adopted by a roll call vote. Although in favor, say aye. Aye.
Alderman Angel.
Yes.
Alderman Gorman.
Here it is.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Simmons.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
All right, by your vote, bill number 2678 passes and now becomes ordinance number.
Twenty-seven, forty-four.
Thank you very much. All right, authorizing the city administrators to sign a letter of intent concerning economic development proposal tentative to the resolution.
It's not tentative anymore, it's on.
Yeah, it's. All right. Since the resolution requires one reading. Any discussion?
Resolution that says we're in favor of patriotism, prosperity, and empire.
All right. All right, Oliver Simmons, would you introduce us a quick?
What page is that on, please?
I got page.
Thank you, this works.
Twenty-seven.
Okay, I don't have that in my packet. I didn't have the last one in my packet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm up there, I'll show you. Bill number please.
Twenty-six, seventy-nine.
Thank you. I move the bill number 2679 be.
First read.
Yes, be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second that bill number 2679 be given its first reading by title only. Although in favor, say aye. 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 Continue please.
A bill to create a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Authorizing the City Administrator to Execute One or More Letters of Intent on behalf of the City of Centraria in Support of a Proposed Economic Development Project." I move that bill number 2679 be adopted by a roll call vote.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that bill number 2679 be adopted by a roll call vote. Although in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Alderman Gorman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Simmons.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Angel.
Yes.
All right, bill number 2679 passes and now becomes resolution number.
R-13-05.
All right. Purchasing.
Ms. Mayor?
Oh, okay.
I should report to the board that things are still in the flux. There are several sites in play at the moment, not just for one.
Okay.
So, I cannot worry. I cannot do the notices necessary for rezoning that might be appropriate or maybe the public hearings going forward yet. In case you wonder why nothing's going on. Still up in the air.
Okay. Still in holding pattern. Thank you. All right, purchasing, street barn roof repair. Have the proposals in your packet?
Have we seen this one before?
Yep.
It's the only proposal received.
Okay.
Seems reasonable.
$5,430.
Same thing if you did the police station and did an adequate shop for us.
Okay.
I make motion that we accept the proposal in the amount of $5,430.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we accept the proposal for roof repair for $5,430. Although in favor, say aye. 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 All right. And that was from DMV Construction, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The Centraria, or at least the Centraria area.
Centraria address. Okay, thank you. Backhold sale.
Talked to Mr. Crispin. He had been authorized to offer a lesser amount than the number I had shown to you folks last meeting. We couldn't go any farther. He went back to his board, and they said they could go up to the $18,500 that we had as a benchmark. Assuming that the condition of the machine does not change between now and the time they take possession.
Okay.
They don't wreck it.
Right.
Anything like that. If you find that acceptable, I appreciate the motion to allow me to sell it to the special road district for that price when we have our new machine and I still don't have a date for it in that. No shame to be in here.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to allow Lynn to sell backhold to the road district at the pretty dollar price. Although in favor, say aye. 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 All right. Old business. Any old business?
Any update on how our street speed limit changes that potentially impacted?
I have not heard any.
I haven't heard any feedback either.
Who's the person who first reported that? Who brought it to our attention? Who first reported, you know, we changed the speed limit up there?
Richard.
Have we got any feedback as to?
Richard, no negative feedback whatsoever. It's, I guess, if you're asking me, I heard any complaints about.
Or a positive to say, yeah, it's gotten better, or?
Yeah, it's, Richard, it's. I just haven't heard a negative side. But you know it's around here, it's rousing success.
No, this is good news, right?
Well, I mean, at some point, we have to make that permanent.
Yeah, it will be made permanent, requiring ordinance. Because it's.
That could be corrected by the board, maybe, I suppose.
Thank you. Any more old business? New business? I have a couple of appointments to make tonight. I spoke with Danny Rush, and he has agreed to be reappointed to the Board of Adjustment. His term expired 2013, and it is a five-year term. To the Board of Adjustment, Danny Rush.
I move we accept the mayor's appointment of Danny Rush to the Board of Adjustment for a five-year term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the mayor's appointment of Danny Rush to the Board of Adjustment for a five-year term. Although in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
I'll point out that his preceding five-year term, I don't think he ever had to attend to me.
And that's what he said.
So far, that's way the dog board.
Yeah, but if he gets someone, it'll be a nightmare.
I agree about the dog board. Yes. It's five and a half years now.
Yeah.
No need yet, so.
All right.
But the fact we have it kind of keeps.
Yes, that's probably why we haven't had to have one.
All right. Also, I'd like to appoint, reappoint Glenn Brown to the Board of Commissioners for the Enhanced Enterprise Zone. Initially, he was appointed for the one-year term, and has expired, and he's agreed to continue on for a full five-year term. So, that's Glenn Brown.
I'll break that motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the appointment of Glenn Brown to the Board of Commissioners for the Enhanced Enterprise Zone for five-year term. Although in favor, say aye. 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 All right. Yep. Yeah, I think that was all I had to mention. All right. Any new business for the Aldermen? All right, Lynn? Administrator recruitment process.
I went over some considerations that you should be thinking about for hiring a new administrator before July 31st. First question I ask you to consider is a big fork in the road. Is, do you want to handle the process in-house? Or do you want to hire a consultant?
The folks that I spoke to were of the opinion that we should handle it in-house. I know everyone on the board can agree with that. The, if we went outside of the organization, it would cost a great deal, and we're not sure what then we get. So, I know.
That means you can throw away one of those sheets I gave you last night and focus on the other.
Okay.
I don't know whether you prepared to do it tonight or not, but do you wish to handle the recruitment process as a committee of the whole? Or a smaller committee? Perhaps more frequent meetings, so the job description and qualifications are settled? Or do you wish to go outside of the elected officials of the city and ask some citizens to help advise you in the process?
I think I would like to go that route. Have some citizen input, as well as board members. Does everyone here want to sit on the board?
Just for the. Figure the qualifications are over what? Are the qualifications of the person that we desire?
It can extend as far as you want.
Up to voting.
Yeah, yeah, outside people can make recommendations to the board. The process still is that the mayor makes an appointment with the acquiescence of the Board of Aldermen. And just as a small bit of guidance, the last time this process was used, 29 years ago, it was a smaller committee of mayoral candidates, private citizens, and existing city officials. But I don't think it included the entire board.
Okay, so a committee of about eight, seven, eight, ten?
Seven.
Okay.
I've numbers dealt.
Yes.
So, between now and, say, the next committee meeting, if you will give your advice to the board about size and who might be supplemental.
Okay.
Or who might not care to spend the time on it.
Okay. If anyone is interested in serving on that committee, please let me know.
Well, before we even go there.
Yeah.
Do we want to handle that as a board ourselves? Or do we want to go into an appointed committee? Everybody here?
Do you understand generally that it's the mayor make the, I guess, the recommendation to the board? Is that the right? My recollection that it reads a little differently. I mean, it may come out the same way, but the way the statute reads, it says, I would take it it's almost like a joint appointment of, by the Board of Aldermen and the mayor. It's not the same as the other appointments that are made solely by the mayor with the motion for approval. It's a.
Joint effort.
Joint effort. And I can get the exact wording out, that's my recollection how that reads. It's just a little bit different wording in the statute. And you might say that that may come out the same way, but I would say that. And I, I don't know, and I really don't know the process that the mayor uses to make appointments, but it may involve getting input from the Aldermen sometimes. But in this case, it would be, I would say, more important that that take place because it would be a joint appointment versus appointment and approval or a motion to approve.
For my replacement.
That's correct. That's correct.
Right.
I thought that was the question, was the ultimate, an ultimate vote for a replacement. But anything before that, I would say it would be a motion or a decision of the Board of Aldermen as to how to proceed with that.
Okay.
Because, I mean, if we decide, if we're of the opinion ourselves that we should do it ourselves, then there's no point in you looking for people to be on this committee. So, I think we ought to make that decision as to whether we want to do it as a committee as a whole or whether we want to pass that off to somebody else.
Okay. So.
I've had some input from people not on the council that they'd like to be involved in the process. I didn't say one way or another. But I thought that they probably would be valuable in the process.
What are your thoughts?
I haven't given it as much consideration, have a strong opinion one way or the other.
Okay.
My initial reaction is, one of the people that. My initial reaction is one of the people that should be invited to be included if they so choose is the new director of credit. I think his input would be valuable because he would probably be working with the city administrator pretty closely on some occasions.
Okay.
Are you looking for someone coming? I'd be happy to be happy.
Sure. Okay. Maybe we'll get somebody from the chamber on also.
I would like to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to bring up for discussion because I can go lead the way on this. I have a strong feeling one way or the other. Also, the big decision regardless.
Exactly.
Right. Okay. You have any thoughts on that?
I think getting input from people outside of the group can hurt certainly.
Exactly.
Right?
I don't, I haven't been much thought, so I can lead the way.
Okay. So, uh... I don't know if we want to advertise in the paper, hey, we're looking for, you know, two or three citizens at large that want to give input for the selection process for the new administrator?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so they're gonna need the process.
Right.
That just extends the appointment process and...
Right. Okay.
May not be as much value.
Alright. Thoughts, Lynn?
Mayor?
Well, I would just say that, I mean, this is a... Goes without saying, it's an important position in the city. I'm just, I guess what I was trying to say is that the Board of Aldermen have a little bit different, has a little bit different role in that the decision-making should be a joint process, I would say, involving... And maybe that happens to some extent with mayoral appointments, I was saying that. But legally speaking, it doesn't have to, the mayor can choose to... And this is different from that, is all I'm trying to, is the point I'm trying to emphasize that it's a joint hiring situation and so it should not be looked at by the board that the mayor is making a decision and then the board approves that like with other mayoral appointments.
Right. So my recommendation would be to have at least one citizen at large from each board and kind of reunite together. And if any of the aldermen don't have time or don't want to be on this selection process and that's fine too. We'll have a nine-member board, nine-member committee to make this election. Everybody okay with that?
Alright. The next thing I can do to aid you is to prepare a dummy... A draft...
Description?
I like draft better.
Yeah, I have a draft here.
A draft advertisement which would then refer to either by electronic link or reference to our website of a longer job profile, which would be the first duty of your, you know, enlarged committee to pass on the deadlines and the ad and its language and then prepare the skills and qualities that you desire of the next administrator. And those relate back to some of the characteristics I put forward into that. I'm going to send notes to you. Ads are pretty straightforward to profile and very a lot. And I will make several, uh, smaller or shorter versions available to you. I mean, I've seen them go over ten or twelve pages. Usually those are the kind of things that headhunters prepare to justify their fees.
Hmm, okay.
But I would plumbarily recommend that you have a hand with the International City Management Association, which its newsletter comes out weekly and they will have your ad for as long as the selection process stays open. Also, the Missouri Municipal League, which now has a job hunter section that is also... Both of those can have links to a longer job profile. We can have an ad in the local paper. I do not recommend advertising in Kansas City or St. Louis. Those are extremely expensive ads when you go down to it. And I would not think that they will find anybody who is in the profession that won't see through either the Municipal League or the I.C. Act. I think that's the sources of your strongest candidates unless you are a headhunter and have personal knowledge of people. And want to talk them into applying, which is their value.
Okay.
I would mention that, I mean, I think when Lynn says profile, I think of job description and it's probably more than that. And there's certainly you can, can make decisions with subjective information. But I would say that part of the, if you want to call it job description, would have to include things that are statutorily required and then also things in the city code that may be able to be revised, updated if you want to. But as a starting point, I would say Section two dash forty-six through two dash fifty point one deals with the city administrator and then the statutory sections of the revised statutes of Missouri, starting with Section seventy-seven point oh four-two and forward through, let's say, seventy-seven point oh four-eight. And people who would say that that is in the third-class city chapter, I would agree, but it's one of those things that they specifically talk about fourth-class cities in there too. So it's, it applies to fourth-class cities, that portion of Chapter seventy-seven. You know, Chapter seventy-seven generally deals with third-class cities.
Okay.
So I would review those city code sections and those statutory sections. And some of the statutory sections are, the wording in the city code follows that, so and that's not subject to change, but obviously things in the city code are part of the statute.
Okay.
Now, who gives the ultimate say on what this says?
You folks.
The board.
The board.
This board, not the committee?
Well...
The committee will give input. And I don't expect that the three additional committee members will be voting members. Does that make sense?
Okay. Why not?
I mean, because then we got ten people all voting. And if we got the time...
If everybody's in on the committee.
Right, if everybody's in on the committee.
I would say that this committee can be looked at as an advisory committee. And if there ever, I would say, it goes without saying that if there ever needs to be an official vote of, for anything, this board would have the authority to do so and could direct the advisory committee in certain ways, not contrary to state statutes, obviously.
Right. Okay.
So I think at any time this board wants to have a voter direct the advisory committee to do something different than they're doing, that you have the authority to do so. It's not like, well, we've created this advisory committee, we can't do anything about it. We're just helpless, that's not the case.
Okay.
Time-wise, not to get derailed, I would expect that we could go fairly fast and that if I make available to your civilian member copies of what Mayor district refers to as some examples of advertisements, they can advise you quickly on that with deadlines. And everybody should be thinking about qualities and job experience, et cetera, that they want to stay in the position because we really should make a decision early in December. Even though there won't be a lot of people who apply immediately. You will not see much until after the holidays, I'm sure.
Right.
I would suggest that we recess at the end of this meeting so that we can have the opportunity for an official meeting as a recess meeting after the committee meeting. Which would be with the December.
Right.
It's a Monday.
Well, second, December is a Monday.
December second is Monday. Yeah.
I can't read the calendar from over.
Oh.
That's not going to help. I got glasses.
I know. Okay. Alright. So in the meantime, be considering what direction we want, stretch we want to go, what kind of attributes and experience we'll, that we're going to look for. Alright, anything further? Thank you. Mayor?
I don't have anything.
Nothing?
No.
Head. As may arise? You have a...
Further as may arise, you mean?
Further as may arise? For the guests we have in the back, our credit members. Michael Rogers? Michael Rogers is the new credit director. I don't know if anybody here knows him already, but we did have a very successful credit event last week. A lot of people were there. We did give Mary Stevens an award for his efforts with credit and kind of getting that committee off and running. Any more as may arise? Hearing none? Entertained a motion to recess until December second.
Somewhere.
After the credit has to be... Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you.